Glad to see everyone at our reconfigured space for work session meetings. I would like to call the meeting to order, and George Seberg is going to read our equity statement.
In Asheville City Schools, we are committed to equity and anti-racist policies for all students and staff to learn and thrive. We recognize that our positions come with power, responsibility, and public service for the entire ACS community. We will model our commitment to equity through our practices and decisions. During this meeting, we invite a pause if harm has taken place, a moment to name the harm, and space to practice repair.
Thank you, George. Amy Ray is not with us this evening. Her father is very ill, so she wasn't able to be with us, but we do have a quorum, and please keep Amy in your thoughts and prayers. I would like to explain three proposed revisions to the agenda, and then I'll seek a motion to approve the amended agenda. One is what I'm going to call Number 1A, a discussion of our Courageous Conversations Protocol that are being used district-wide. So we're going to add that in. Second, if you look at the Policies on Second Read, Policy Code 3320 School Trips, and Policy Code 3620 Extracurricular Activities and Student Organizations, we are seeking additional guidance from legal counsel. I'm sorry.
These are second read. First read.
Sorry, they are on first read. Apologies. I'm looking right at it. I just said it wrong. We are seeking additional guidance from legal counsel, and so we plan to have those back on in October. But 3320 and 3620 will not be on first read. And then last, I'm adding Item 4.3. Before we go into closed session, random board chair remarks. No, you're excited. So with those three changes, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Some of them.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the amended agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So at this time, Courageous Conversations is a protocol and a training that many in our district have done. I have not done it, but I know that Jessie, and Rebecca, and George have gone through the training, as has Maggie, as have many of the people at this table. And Maggie is going to share with us how the Courageous Conversations Protocol is being used at all other district meetings, with the idea that even though some of us are untrained, we can start to use this to guide our work as well. So Maggie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. So the Courageous Conversations Protocol is a really, I think, strong tool to help have a productive conversation, where all voices can be heard and honored, and perspectives can be brought to the table. So it's three parts to this protocol, and the first part, which a lot of people can get a hold of pretty easily, is called the compass. And on the compass, it has four quadrants: thinking, feeling, believing, and acting. And every meeting that we have at our district for leadership, we include this protocol at the top of the agenda, and then we just take some time to first look at the compass, think about where are we showing up that time at that meeting on the compass. And so if we find ourselves, you know, really sitting in the feelings quadrant, knowing and just recognizing that, but also part of the compass is to help you understand that in order to have a productive conversation, you can't have a productive conversation if you're only in your feelings, and you're not starting to center yourself between those other four quadrants. So the idea of the compass is just a noticing tool. Where are you? How are you showing up today? But then also, as you move into having conversations, you want to, you know, you want to be centered in how you're showing up. So if you're showing up in the feelings quadrant, and you're really feeling yourself kind of hijacked by your emotions, you may, what we may do is prompt you to say, we may prompt you, prompt and say, you know, just recognize why are you there? Start asking yourself some questions about why you're there, what made you move into that quadrant, and then that will help you center between feeling and thinking. And then we'll prompt some other questions about acting and believing, just to help as we have difficult conversations, to make sure we're centered on that compass so that we can all engage productively. It also sets apart the second part, our four agreements. And these, I really think about are norms for how we're going to engage in conversation together. And those four agreements, pretty simple ones, about staying engaged, experiencing discomfort, speaking your truth, and expect and accept non-closure. So we know that, you know, if we're going to all work together, we all have to be engaged, because if we look around and we see someone who's playing on their phone, or really not paying attention at all, then why are they even in the conversation? So each one of those has a purpose. Experiencing discomfort, we're going to talk sometimes about things that make people uncomfortable, and then there might be multiple perspectives, and there might be some disagreement on those. So knowing that listening to another person's perspective and honoring what they bring to the table, because kind of goes to that third one, speaking your truth, is really important. And along with speaking your truth is also talking about your you, and using you and I, like I statements, because there's a tendency to use we, and they, and those, you know, but you've really got to speak from your personal perspective and your personal lived experience. And expect and accept non-closure, the conversations and the work in front of us is ongoing, and we're not going to finish it in one night, so we've got to expect that the work will be there tomorrow, and, you know, accept that this is a long journey that's going to take a long time. And then the six conditions, these are much more complicated and require a lot of unpacking. So I would say for us to really start with thinking about the compass, where we're showing up on the compass, helping each other center where we are so we can have productive conversations, and then honoring the four agreements, I think is a really great place to start. And then we can kind of through time start unpacking each of those six conditions individually, and processing what that means and what that looks like. But I'll give you a kind of a quick rundown. So focusing on personal, local, and immediate, that's again, using your I-statements, but also using those as, you know, I'm showing up in this room as a white woman, and knowing that that perspective is very different than how Jessie's going to show up in a conversation because of his lived experiences. I was talking about, I was really thinking about the hair. Our hair's a lot different, Jessie. Pepe's wearing a ponytail just like me.
It was something that came up when I met a few weeks ago with other Hispanic elected officials. We had an initial gathering that a lot of times Hispanic elected officials are not acknowledged as Hispanic, and are questioned on their validity as Hispanic identity, and questioned as far as their fluency in Spanish, and about half of the Hispanic elected officials would consider themselves fluent. So it is an issue that comes up.
Yeah, thank you. Isolating race, knowing that we have to look at how, when we isolate race individually, there's lots of coexisting factors that can impact outcomes, but when you take everything out of the equation except for race, you still will see some of the greatest disparities between outcomes in different groups. So it's like really saying, yes, we can talk about socioeconomic, we can talk about multilingual, we can talk about all these other gender, religion, but when we really isolate race, that's when we can say we are really still, no matter what social or religion you are, race is one that is still causing a lot of, we're seeing a lot of discrepancies between different racial groups. Normalizing social construction and multiple perspectives, that's really thinking about and understanding that, like I said, we all have multiple perspectives. My lived experience is very different than Anna's lived experience, and we've got to recognize that and allow people to share their perspective and honor that as what they have lived. The fourth, one of the four is monitor the agreements, then the conditions, and establish parameters. And that one basically refers you back to the four agreements. Are we still following the four agreements? Are we talking and re-centering ourselves on the compass? And what parameters are we going to say, you know what, if we get to here, that's just, we're not having a productive conversation, we all need to take a break, a pause, and come back after we've had some chance? So that's what, basically saying, hey, use the tool in front of you, let's make sure we're doing that. Use a working definition of race. That refers to the definition of race. Race is a socially constructed thing. It's not, there's no genetics behind it, and it's something that was built from social construction. So understanding that, you know, within itself, everyone should have this equal opportunity, and we're seeing how race plays a part in that. And then examining the role and presence of whiteness. And this one gets a lot of people, they get stuck on this one, and all it's saying is, we know that we live in a society, in a country, in a world where a certain type of culture and beliefs are preferential and rise above. Let's look at the Fortune 500 company CEOs. I mean, I think of all of them, there are very few that are minority, or black, or female. You look at them, and they're probably 90% white males. Why is that? Why are white males getting to this level of, you know, high achievement? Why aren't other groups? So understanding that something's happening that has created an opportunity for a certain group of people to get advantages that others aren't getting. So that's this, are we preferring one culture that is better and best instead of other cultures? So it's taking that time to really examine, particularly for a board, as we write policy, how is our policy making sure that we are creating equitable opportunities for students? Not that we're writing a policy that's going to inadvertently, or for the purpose of raising one group above another. So understanding all those dynamics of culture, and just this idea of the meritocracy, and if you work hard, you'll get what you need, and, but we know that some people work really, really hard and are still not able to earn a living paycheck. Why is that happening? And what are we setting up as a school system to help mitigate that? So always understanding. And there's a lot in this one that's the hardest one to really wrap your mind around, but those are the six conditions. So my recommendation would be we kind of start with the compass, the agreements, and then as we can, you know, unpack and understand the six conditions, particularly as we move through reform policy, is taking time to really isolate these conditions and walk through, how is this condition showing up in our policy, and what are we doing to make sure that we are writing policies that are going to create equitable outcomes for students? That's the quick, two-minute version.
Thank you, Maggie. I appreciate you sharing that with us so it can guide our work in our present political climate. I think all of us, I don't think, I am not speaking for any of you, remain committed to doing equity work in this district, and so this is just our way of trying to make sure the board is doing that work also. So, thank you. Let's see. At this time, I'm going to call on Tanya Proche to talk about releases from Buncombe County, to Buncombe County, I'm sorry.
What you have before you is a continued list of ongoing student releases for '25-'26, and if you look over to the right-hand corner, to the right-hand side, you'll see final board approval. If you do not see a date there, those are the students that will need your approval. You have any comments or questions?
I really appreciate this format now. I like being able to see the full year and the full scope. One thing I noticed is that, over the course of the year, and I recognize that budgets being what they are, there's impossible to even tackle this right now, but 14 children over the past year left our district for dual enrollment in Buncombe County. I just think that's something to clock.
A question. First of all, I came in last week, I saw a military operation going on in that place in there. So I want to thank everyone that helped out when Ms. Tanya was sick, and we need to somewhere, somehow send it to the parents, send them, to let them know that, thanking for their patience and everything else. And everyone that helped her out, Tanya, we appreciate, I know she appreciated. Have you bought them lunch or dinner yet?
I have not.
Oh, okay.
I have not, and you see them shaking their head. I have not.
Okay.
We have met, and I try not to get emotional about it, but it was a huge task, and they just did a phenomenal job with what they had to work with, and I can't thank them enough.
But thank me too.
And I think a lot of them have a better understanding for what it takes to enroll students.
All right, make sure I get invited, because I did help. All right, no, just letting you know. Okay, last question. Can you give us an update for August? Is that possible? Are you going to do?
I'll do that at the Monday's meeting in my remarks.
Okay.
We're still kind of finalizing the 10-day count. That was today, so that's kind of the official cutoff where we start looking at who showed up and who didn't.
And hopefully we're looking better.
I mean, I sent you most recent numbers on Friday. They probably haven't changed very much, so we've only looked at how we've compared to our projected numbers, not how we compared to enrollment last year. So that's, now we're at 10 days, we can pull that and start analyzing what we see.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask one more clarifying question, because I echo what George said. Being able to see like a running list is really nice, because I think I had always understood that we'd get them in these groups, but that's often just because of the timing of the kind of cycle that they're on. And so I heard that this report is the '25-'26, and it goes back to approvals from March of '25. So when I hear '25-'26, I think of like this moment as sort of a start of that year. Is this going to be like running, 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 or once a year starting over?
Technically, it's supposed to happen once a year, but because for either district, parents don't meet the cutoff, the start is in February, the cutoff is May 31st. So if they don't meet that cutoff for both boards to approve, it carries on and on, and then we try our best to get parents to complete it. So that's why you still have the last-minute stragglers on this report. But it is timed, but parents, for whatever reason, do not meet that timeframe. Does that make sense? So for this coming February, we'll open up for '26-'27. So from February to February 1st to May 31st, parents know we start calling. You need to complete the annual DAR process, that means tuition and DAR for the upcoming school year.
Coming school year. Yes, that makes sense to me, and I didn't know that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's not your fault. It's me, and I think this format helps us to connect more to that, so it's just, once again, helpful. So the folks at the top of this list were like the, they got the word for next year, you need to go ahead, and their kids were probably already at their school where they've been, and they said, we want it again next year, so we're going to go ahead and start that paperwork, and that's what we're seeing kind of rolling in. And that's, there's actually, this is a small list then, that considering how many are sitting here waiting for more approval. You're saying these are the ones where they didn't get it done then, and now they've put forward the paperwork, so we're going to approve them. And then as we, we see these every month, so from this period, like for next month, we may see a few, and that is same kind of thing, just people who are?
Last minute.
Okay.
Just didn't meet the deadline.
Deadline.
So you should not have many.
Got you.
We're probably down to about 10 now.
Okay, okay.
And so we're just trying everything possible to work with them.
I get it.
And whatever school system they're in to get that school system's approval.
That makes sense. Thanks, I appreciate that explanation.
You're welcome.
Two things. Echoing what Jessie said, I want to acknowledge that Central Office is being asked to run leaner, and that means that when people are out, other folks have to chip in, and we recognize that, and we're grateful to all of you. Second, board members, is everyone okay with the releases being on our consent agenda next week? Okay, so be it. Thank you. I will now turn it over to Heidi to talk about our contracts and memorandums of understanding.
Good evening. As usual, this time of year, July, August, September, usually we have the longest list of contracts and MOUs. We have added that description page at the beginning of the contracts at your request, so if you have any questions, if I cannot help you, many of the folks in this room could. Please let us know if you have any.
Board members.
I have a lot of little questions, and I'm wondering if it makes more sense for me just to email those questions to somebody?
Questions about the Health and Human Services one, or the ones that are information only?
The ones that are information only, and essentially, yes.
Okay, so the information only, you can ask questions about, but they don't technically need board approval, so we can still answer those questions?
Completely understand, but should I just email it? Because I don't want to take up the board meeting.
Yep, you're welcome to email those to me.
Okay, will do.
That's great, thanks, Pepe. So just to restate that, anything that's a memorandum of understanding, it's appropriate for us to ask questions. Pepe's going to send his by email for his own edification, which is great, I appreciate that. And just to be clear, though, there's one that will be on the consent agenda, so I do want to make sure we talk about that one tonight. The, or it may not be on the consent agenda, but the Buncombe County Health and Human Service School Nurse Contract.
I got a question about that one. Thinking about the, casting back to our budget process, Buncombe County Health and Human Services falls under Buncombe County. So is this contract, when we get our budget allotment from the county, is our school nurses included in that budget allotment, or is this a separate tranche of money that we then have to contract for?
So as we discussed, that mid-year cut last year honestly was a kind of, kind of an eye-opener for me, because that conversation about the school nurses' funding came up during that conversation as a separate item. I did not realize necessarily that the county would consider that a separate line item with their, within their own budget. So they did cut some of that funding, and as a result, and Ms. Robinson may want to address this more, we did lose one nurse this year, but the contract amount stayed the same. And so this is an expense we have to pay out of that appropriation that we receive from the county. It's as if we were contracting with anybody else to get nurses' services, basically.
To George's question, though, a year ago, would it have been part of the appropriation from the county?
No.
It's always been that way.
As far as I know, is looking back the last couple of years.
Have we received a contract or a proposal? I'm not seeing something linked.
Yeah, it's linked.
Okay, I'm not finding it.
Yeah, it's got the cover sheet, any agreement. If you click at the top.
You have to click on the contracts and MOUs, and then it's at the top of that sheet.
Oh, yes, it's in the, it's in the attached document.
Yeah.
Heidi, you said something while he's looking at that, that I think I'd like to check in about, where I love on the cover sheet, where I saw this is a contract renewal, and it says, is it a change in amount? And it says no. And I think then I made the assumption that we're getting, we're paying the same for the same service. But you just said, we're paying the same amount for one FTE less.
Correct. They're still serving all the sites, but with one less.
Nurse.
Right.
I guess there was an update around noon today, maybe, in the sheet, because I've got one contra, one of those contract sheets that has the train contract at the top, and the other doesn't have the train contract, and it just has the Buncombe County Health and Human Services contract. So maybe I'm confused.
I don't, train is not on this month, because I went.
It was last month.
Yeah, I don't wonder if you had the?
Yeah, train was last month.
Thank you very much.
So last year, we did have five nurses. We have four this year, and we had one that was shared at the William Randolph Campus, and we no longer have a nurse on the William Randolph Campus, and they're on call currently. That's how we'll be utilizing their services.
On call from another?
One of the other four nurses, yes.
Board members, any other questions for?
I don't, I don't mean to belabor the point, so I just want some clarification, if you don't mind. So we're paying the same amount for four rather than five. Is that because salaries for nurses have gone up? Like, why are we still paying the same amount for?
To the best of my understanding, Buncombe County's budget reduced the line item for school nurses in their own budget, and so that equated to a reduction for Buncombe County Schools and us. And I would just say, I would encourage you, though, still to do the math, and if we were to hire a nurse today, they would likely cost us upwards of $70,000 or $80,000 each. So I still think this is a beneficial contract that we have with the county, even though we would hate to see a reduction in services.
Just maybe we reframe it, it's not a reduction in services provided, it's a reduction in the rest of that, provided the services, they are still monitoring our vaccinations, they are, it's just a reduction of people.
Yeah, no, I understand that, it's a reduction of people, but it's not a reduction of costs. So where are those?
Because those services they are providing.
Okay, understood, okay.
Ooh, April, can I ask then? I made the assumption, and maybe this was wrong, actually, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, because I knew that we contracted for school nurses. Can we hear this, do we do this in FTEs, or is it organized differently than FTEs? I think that might be the piece. So it's fewer people, but is that, that's, okay. I think I understand better now. So we actually are getting more than it sounded like. I thought we were going from five FTEs of full-time nurses working for us to four FTEs of nurses, and you're saying it's four people but doing the same amount of contracted?
It's not ideal, but it is.
The contracted hours, do, are we contracting with the same number of hours?
We're contracting services.
Services.
Okay.
So the widget we're buying is the service plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, if they said, oh, we can do that with three people, that's, I mean, it is not ideal, but it's not, but right, they're saying this is the cost of these services.
And initially, because of the alternative program, and there's never been a nurse there, they decided to provide a nurse for one day for the William Randolph Campus last year. So we did still, ultimately, we're down one staff, one nurse, however, we're still able to access those services.
Board members, this is the contract for our approval. Are we prepared to have it on the consent agenda next week, or do you all have further questions about it?
There's not an alternative in front of us, correct?
We either vote for this, or we don't vote for this.
We don't have an alternative source for school nurses, and this is the best deal we're aware of.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So I'm hearing that it will be on the consent agenda next week. Any other questions that anyone has about the?
I'd like to also add, just to keep in mind, we do have the health clinics at the middle and high schools, so we still have medical services there as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, anybody has about items of memorandum of understanding, please feel free to email those to Maggie. So I'm going to move us on to policies on second read, and I want to clarify one thing. You will note that Policy Code 1310, 4002 Parental Involvement, is on both second read and later appears on first read. And that is because of chronology. There was a change earlier this year, and we talked about it last month, the name, image, likeness provisions that student athletes can now profit from their name, image, and likeness. And so that is what was the first change, and that is what is on second read. There is an additional subsequent change that we'll discuss when we get to first read. But I just wanted to, does everybody understand that? That when we have this policy here in front of us on second read, 1310 specifically, it was just a, I think if you click on them, you see different things highlighted. But does that make sense to everybody? So the policies are in front of us on second read. We discussed these last month. I'm not aware of a lot of discussion on these, but certainly happy for folks to ask questions.
Sarah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify. The one that you were talking about...
Did I say it wrong?
...image likeness, it's 3620. 1310 does also appear on both. You're fine, you're fine. I just wanted to clarify on that. So 3620 for second read is the name, image, likeness. 3620 for first read was what was removed because we want to further...
Sorry.
No, you're good. Just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page there.
Yes, well, they should be.
1310 does reflect, is on both, though, with changes that were previously provided by NCSBA being on for second read and then the additional changes.
So ready to get that? I apologize. I had the wrong number. The essence of this is, everything that you see in front of you on second read, we looked at last month. For a couple of these, there have been even more changes since then, and those are going to come up on first read.
Yes.
So how about that? Sorry, Anna, I tried so hard.
No worries.
Any questions about the policies on second read? Are we okay with those being on the consent agenda on Monday? Okay. There appears to be consensus. So everything on second read will be on the agenda next week to be approved. Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Maggie to talk about our reform policy.
All right. So as per our conversations last year, we are moving forward with looking at additional Board policies to create more deep, long-term, long-range impactful changes. And the selection that we had for this initial one to go through was Policy 3000, are the goals and objectives of our educational program. Just as a refresher, reform policies drive transformational change. They are setting the standard for our school system, for how we're going to structure and move processes forward. They should be resting on the core beliefs and commitments and our theory of action. And these are very wide-reaching policies that extend beyond the simple operational policies. They set a direction and drive high performance, and they make immediate improvement possible, and they drive long-term solutions. So just to also kind of ground the Board in Board Policy 1010, that just establishes that the Board will provide a system of schools, establishing general policies and keeping with the needs of our community and the requirements of state law, as well as performing different duties that are imposed by the law. And specifically, our most significant duties as a Board are to make sure that we have provided every student with the opportunity to receive a sound and basic education, and provided leadership and direction through the formulation of goals and objectives, especially defining and setting high academic standards for student success, and then creating policies that establish those standards, accountability, and evaluation of essential operations of the school system. So grounding us in that, in particular, how the Board is going to establish standards, create accountability, and then have an evaluation, is why I think this policy is one that's key for us to move on to next. I wanted to also make that connection between this policy and where we're moving with our strategic plan. And in the strategic plan, one of the main themes that we need to address as a school system is that everything we do as a school system needs to be in service of teaching and learning. So Policy 3000, these are the educational objectives of our educational program, what we do from 8:30 to 3:30, 7:30 to 2:30 every day with 3,800 students that walk through our doors. And this is under defining more particularly what our classrooms should look like, what they should sound like, what they should feel like, and how we approach teaching and learning within our school system. Policy 3000 details what are the outcomes, we should also detail those outcomes, that we want to see as a result of our instructional programming. The current policy that we have mirrors pretty much every other 3,000 policy in the state of North Carolina. I didn't go through an exhaustive list, but I mean, as I started looking, 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 they're all worded exactly the same, and I think I looked at about 20. So what I thought we could do first is review Policy 3000. And then I provided the Board, in a green folder, you have a copy of the policy as well as a protocol called the 4A Protocol. So what I thought we could spend some time doing is, as we kind of guide our discussion on this, what are anything, what is in the current policy that we agree with that we want to keep? What are things that we want to maybe talk about and have a discussion about, quote, argue about it, or productive conversations about? Are there alternatives? Alternatives that you want to suggest for us to consider? And then is something missing that you think we need to articulate within this policy? So I thought we'd give the Board members just a few minutes to kind of culminate your thinking, and then we can have a discussion on what are those things in the 4A Protocol. And I made some comments as well for, as I reviewed this as a superintendent, things that I would agree with or want to change or articulate that I think are missing. And then after that, I gave you three examples of other policies from other states that we can look at, if those are things that kind of help stir your thinking about things you may want to include in our policy. So I think we'll start, give you some time to read and take down some notes.
Thank you, Maggie. Just to clarify, what I think you're asking is that we use this form and select our thoughts and share.
Correct.
We can be sharing from the same format.
[laughing]. Uh-uh. [laughing]. It's been about just a little over five minutes. We want to start discussion. Does anyone need just a little more time to finish thoughts? Are we ready? All right. All right. Bye. I will. I thought we'd discuss what we like here first, go through our current policy, and then look at those and what we might want to add from those. other ones? And that can also be part of something to take home and look at later. So first, I think for us to discuss, what are the components of our current policy that the Board is in agreement with? What are things you would like to see maintained from this current policy as we go forward? What are things you would like to see maintained from this current policy as we go forward? I don't hear a lot. I actually have two things. First of all, I do strongly believe that we should be getting accredited by an accrediting organization. So I do think that that's one thing we would want to keep is that we are maintaining accreditation by an accrediting service. I think that helps keep our school system in a very positive light. To have that accreditation just makes a lot of sense for me. The other thing I think is they do touch on in that first paragraph, the role of parents, government partnerships with agencies, businesses, and communities. I think identifying that we can't do this alone, that we have to partner with organizations to meet all the needs of our student, I think is something that I would like to see carried on in the next version of this policy.
Maggie, only because you just brought up alternatives. I just, I think there could be a more expansive definition of parents.
Yes, agreed.
I mean, I agreed with what you said, and I actually loved seeing the word government there.
Caregivers, yep.
I was going to say that I don't think I disagree with anything that's here. And so, but what I found my, in the agree reflection is it just feels, I called it minimally sufficient. So I want to be clear on what, what's the type of policy that supports us to do the work we want to do, not necessarily blow it out to be something so overly specific and cumbersome that it's actually more of a problem. But it felt to me like it was just, I literally had to rewrite it as a, what is this? Because it's in one paragraph covering like disparate topics. So I didn't find it, I agree with all of it. I don't find it very inspiring.
I didn't find it inspiring, or that it goes far enough. And that's one of the things that, under the alternatives, is they use that word sufficient. I think we should be striving for exceptional beyond sufficient. So that was one of the alternatives to some of the language that they offered. Any other comments there?
There are a couple of things I did do agree with. A successful educational program also depends on innovation, although I would argue that it doesn't just have to be the individual school level. But I do like, I appreciate the recognition that we have to continually innovate. I would use different language. And then one of the bullet points, learn and acquire the skills necessary for a lifetime of continuous learning. I appreciated that. Again, some language could be changed, but I like lifetime of continuous learning. I was going to talk about the next box.
Any others on alternatives or agree?
I agreed with the bullet point of learn to be responsible for and accept the consequences of one's conduct and academic performance. And then I just wanted to echo what has already been said that sufficient is like a low bar.
Have anyone here foster respect and appreciation for cultural and ideological diversity and difference? That's the only one, I mean, I can, I can see that one.
Overall, I look at this Policy 3000 and think, wow, that's actually not that bad. That's pretty good. So I think that that's a good starting point. I am, as far as what's missing, I think more clearly articulating the importance of culturally responsible, responsive, excuse me, instruction, and the importance of having choices. And I don't know whether buy-in or empowerment, but that sense of ownership over your own education. I don't know that this policy is the right place to put it, but I did notice that that seemed to be missing. And then the biggest gap that I saw was early childhood education. There's no commitment or recognition of its importance. And whether that is put as, you know, the importance of fostering early childhood education, you know, and connecting, connecting with the early childhood education community, or however we want to put it, if people are shy about taking full responsibility. I would go for full responsibility for making sure we have enough early childhood education resources and taking more of a strong stand. But at least some sort of mention of the importance of that.
Yeah, I think mentioning the, the impact of birth through kindergarten, educational opportunities would be and could be implemented in this. And then I just wanted to offer the term agency as an alternative for what you were speaking to prior to that.
Thank you.
Maggie, are we, are we done with agree? Had you moved, where are we?
So I wanted to see if there was anything we were ready to really discuss or argue about. Should we have it in there or should we not have it in there? So I think things like, should we put early childhood education in this? It's not in there. Pepe's making an argument that it should be. So that's a discussion of something we may want to list, like how, are there other things that you would say would be in there? Because one of the areas, when George mentioned innovation, it says allowing individual schools to develop their, you know, individual plans. And my, you know, frame there is, and those individual plans should be based off the district work plan. So making sure that it's school systems aligning with the district work, instead of people going off on their own tangent, that that would something, I would argue that we needed to do that. And then just basically upping the standard. And then I kind of went into articulate. So I believe we need to make sure we're including in this the portrait of a scholar, those areas that we've already identified, which is continuous learning, curiosity, creativity, all those. We need to link our three promises and our theory of action, which includes accountability and agency. I think we also need to very clearly outline that our classes are teaching the standards, a standards-based curriculum that is culturally relevant.
I think being able, the freedom to sort of, from my perspective, I didn't know if it was something I'm arguing or if it's what's missing, but.
Goes along.
Yeah, but what stands out to me as an important sort of takeaway is that what I don't see here is enough about the way that we will support students. I noticed that Henry County Schools had a section in theirs called Align Support Structures for Schools, which is still not enough. I'd like to see us have specificity around how, I think it has to do with culture. I think it has to do with values and that kids are, kids are not widgets that we're opening and pouring in geography and pouring in. And that, like even in their, the bullet, in our current policy, there's this bulleted list of what students will have the opportunity to do. And I found five total that align with our Portrait of a Scholar. And I think that's insufficient. I think that they, that our Portrait of a Scholar should be kind of where we're saying, what do we want for kids and then go from there. And I noticed that, to Jesse's point, looking at our Portrait of a Scholar, the bullet there that's called Foster Respect and Appreciation for Cultural and Ideological Diversity and Differences falls under many of our Portrait of a Scholar characteristics, rather than just being this one thing that sits there. So I'd love to, I think overall, it made me think that this is not doing enough to talk about how we will support kids to be successful and how schools will be supported to be successful. And we already have the tools, the theory of change, our Portrait of a Scholar. So we don't need to go reinvent it. I think it's how to bring them all together. I, I agree with that, Rebecca. And I, under alternatives, I, I suggested that the first three bullet points could be consolidated, similar to the Highline Public Schools Policy on Student Learning Goals. And then I also highlighted that I have an appreciation for the Chicago Public Schools Policy that's centered around culturally responsive education and diversity.
Yeah, trying to give you a wide range of policies so that you could see kind of how far different school districts go one way or another.
And I, I did want to bring up an idea of like behind innovation, that it could be a reflection of school culture, based on the student needs of the population in, in and across the various schools in our district, because they're not, they're not all the same.
Can I add something to early childhood education? I'm way in the process of early childhood education up to third grade. Make sure that everyone is able to read and write and everything else by the time they reach fourth grade level.
Our goal is that 100% of students are reading on grade level. That's kind of our long-term goal by the end of third grade.
By the end of third grade. And that is part of, and that's part of early childhood education, correct?
Not necessarily early childhood. When I think of early childhood, I'm thinking of from birth to kindergarten. Early childhood, that would be birth to K. And then like primary elementary school would be K1, 2, 3. Sometimes third is there or not.
But nowadays, by the time a kid gets to kindergarten, they are reading a little bit, correct? I mean, they are.
Not always.
And I got a, nobody got a kid this young, okay.
I'll tell you, as I'm walking through, as I go through kindergarten classrooms, it's a wide variety. I mean, there are kids that are already, you know, reading books, and there are kids that can't do the letters of the alphabet yet.
Okay, so how can we improve to the kids that don't get that education when we are talking about early childhood education? Where is that kid, when they step into kindergarten to third grade? Where are they, where are they going to get the education?
Hopefully in our classrooms.
And that's where early childhood, that's where we come at when we talk about early childhood education, right? Okay, so it's before kindergarten. And if they don't get it by kindergarten, how are they going to get it?
That's what we work on.
I'm asking that, that's the.
And I think, just, I want to give my perspective. I think, Jesse, the only thing that we do pre-K is the pre-K classrooms, right? That's that we currently have. And I don't know the number, how many do we have? X number of pre-K classrooms that we currently have, that we choose to provide. That's in our sphere. I mean, because it's been put out there and we get to argue about this, I'm not ready for Policy 3000, which is the first in the whole, like if you look at the policies, it's educational programs. And it's about what educational programs we offer. I'm not ready for us to promise offering something other than what we already promised. I'm not sure we're in expansion mode, speaking for myself. And Pepe was acknowledging that. So Jesse, I'm only trying to offer to you that part of what I think we're having a healthy debate about is, do we wish to ground Policy 3000 in early childhood education that's actually not something we do that much of? But at least to the extent we do do it, I think we owe a commitment to it. I'm trying to get to where you are, but also acknowledge the debate.
Isn't that where the gap usually comes from when you're talking about the achievement gap? If a kid doesn't have it by the time they reach kindergarten, doesn't that automatic, that's when they come into kindergarten, they don't get it? It's, the gap is already started?
That's what Ms. Earl would tell you.
Yes, it definitely is true. If you are starting, if, you know, you're in a class of 20 kids and you have five students that don't know their alphabet letters yet, and you have, you know, the other students that are already reading, you know, full paragraphs, you're going to, the teacher has a lot of differentiation to do. Not that those students can't make up and meet that level, but yeah, if you're ahead, you're going to keep moving ahead. And even though you're coming in just learning your alphabet, you're still moving ahead.
Or you're going to keep going backwards, downwards?
No, I don't think down, but I think, do you, how do you close that gap?
That's the question I'm asking. How do we close the gap if we don't get them before kindergarten?
You provide specialized education, you do the tutoring. There's lots of ways to help close that gap in the academic program.
And my understanding is that in special education, it is the Department of Health and Human Services responsibility up through age three, and then it becomes the school district's responsibility. And so there are things that we're expected to support. It may be that the majority of us or all of us would be comfortable with wording that encouraged early childhood education, or encouraged and collaborated with early childhood education in our community, or supported, or we can come up with something. I am not at the point where I think our, our finances that we are given by the General Assembly and additional funding from our county commissioners is enough to support universal access to pre-K, as much as I want that, and as much as the county commissioners I know want that. But there is, there is something that we can state about its importance.
Ms. can add, I don't disagree with the word you said. I 100% agree with that. I'm just, I'm sort of like, but Policy Code 3000, the goals and objectives of our educational programs. So I'm only sort of questioning, like, I'm all for saying the things you said. I just, I'm not quite sure I get that they fit in here, because this is about the programs we offer and our commitment to our programming. It does for the pre-K classrooms we have. So you guys can work on that. I don't disagree with what you said. I'm only not sure that the, the right audience is reading that when they read Policy 3000.
Well, maybe we need a 3001 or a 3001 and a half, or whatever it is that is focused on the importance of.
I think that's actually a great question. Maggie, what is 3000 supposed to be? Is it supposed to signal to the world our views on all of these topics? Is it, I mean, I guess that.
It is, it is really to provide kind of what I put in this policy that comes from Policy 1010. It's to create goals and objectives for our educational program, to set high academic standards for student success, and to make sure that we've established standards and accountability for our educational program. So what do we want to achieve? Should it be high standards and we should have an accountability system in place to help make sure we, if we don't, we're doing something about it? And to me, sufficient is not a high standard.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Sarah, that I think, Pepe, I applaud the desire to get early childhood in the place where it needs to be, in front of a lot of people, to be able to put the, to get the groundswell on what is needed in not only Asheville and this country, support early childhood education, no doubt. I, I think if we're going to put early childhood as like a bullet point or whatever it might be in Policy 3000, why don't we also put something about CNI department? Why don't we, like, I worry that if we're focusing on one large thing that is part of our purview, but also part of the purview of the whole community, are we not, does that set us up to put a whole lot of stuff in 3000? So I think I would, I would recommend that we put it, and it's somewhere else, that we acknowledge how important early childhood is and to work with that.
Okay, I got one more question. If we look into a lens, the one that we're saying that we are looking into, or should be looking into, from, from K to 12th, where is the, where are we hurting? Or where is the gap? Where do we feel that the gap is starting? And where should we be looking at? Should we be looking at the bottom, below K? Or should we be looking at K, from K to K3 should be a lens that we should be focusing on so that by the time they reach fourth grade, at least the gap would have closed?
So what I'm hearing is a goal, one of the outcomes that you want to see as a result of our educational program is that every student is reading on grade level by the time they enter fourth grade. That would be one of the outcomes that we want to identify to strive towards.
So a lens should be from K to, to third grade. I mean, that's where a lens, if we want that to happen by the time the kid get to the fourth grade level, and we're talking about not only reading, we're talking about reading math, the basic requirement, it should be, our lens should be there, correct? It, it, it won't do us no good if it's in a seventh, seventh grade, eighth grade high school level.
But I, but we offer beyond. But I, but we offer beyond third grade. So if we just narrow our focus so much, then what are we offering grades four through 12 for?
Well.
We have to define what we want as an outcome at the end of the program, not as much from just the end of third.
But by the time they reach fourth, and that most of them, majority, 80% instead of 30% now, have reached that level, it's, the lens is, the lens is open for the fourth graders and fifth graders, because they, they have the knowledge that they didn't have. And I think they can probably, from four, fifth, and sixth, they probably can close that gap, and that lens, we don't have to look so deep into that lens, because we did it from K to third grade. I mean, if, if that's what we're looking at, by the time that kid reached fourth, fourth grade level.
Jessie, I couldn't agree with you more, that early intervention, and unfortunately, within the parameters that were given, which is that we can't offer universal pre-K at this point. So, yes, I think you're absolutely right, that that's the time to have special emphasis, and this policy is about all of our educational programming, not just that. And what I love about what you're saying, though, that I feel like is so important with where we're headed, you should have strategic plan, oh, it's right there, right? The strategic plan connection is that out of looking at what's going on, what people have to say, how parents, students, teachers, educators feel about what's happening in our district, all that we do must be in service to teaching and learning. And that's got one type of emphasis from K to three, and it's going to have potentially a different type of emphasis at the other levels. This policy covers all of it, and what I want to see here, not just here, but in strategically in everything that we're doing going forward, is as we focus on outcomes for kids, we don't just name what they are, we get real serious about what happens when kids, how do we identify kids that need more? How are we showing up differently than we have in the past? When we start to see that children aren't on pace for the achievement that we want them to have? Because if we're just going to say it, but we're not going to really define what it looks like to identify early, scoop them up, surround them with the types of support, then I don't want to find us at the end of the next couple of years with a bunch of kids who have been retained in their grades and who are getting really bad grades, because we created a more focused system on the outcomes that we want.
So may I suggest that, okay, so I'm thinking about why my kid, who is now a senior, was getting reading instruction their first week of kindergarten, and how we are in this situation now with the high-stakes testing, the push-down curriculum where we are doing what I would have thought of as first-grade reading instruction. But we're trying to do that, you know, starting at the beginning of kindergarten, and I'm thinking about those kids who show up, who are able, ready to be in that environment to learn and to receive reading instruction, and the kiddos who are not. So for me, whatever language we can put in, like, I'm taking to heart Maggie's point about how this can be an aspirational document, and it doesn't have to be minimum standards, and to have at least the aspiration that we want as close as possible to universal access to pre-K, and we want to either support that or encourage it. You know, we can use our kind of bully pulpit, but our, our PR, whatever resources we do to encourage kindergarten enrollment, we can be doing similar sorts of things to encourage pre-K, whether it's with us or elsewhere in the community. But the more kids who get to that kindergarten classroom ready to learn, and with some of those social-emotional skills that I don't always have, this is me making fun of myself, the better off we're going to be in closing all of the gaps. And I just don't see a way forward to close the gaps we're talking about without acknowledging the importance of the early childhood education piece.
Yeah, and, I mean, acknowledging, I, I love where this discussion has taken us, because like the, from a developmental standpoint, the sensitive period for language acquisition closes around seven, so the earlier that we can get books in kids' hands, the better. The kids that come into kindergarten and have not held a book, those kids are, are behind, and they, they're behind from the start. And we, we have to be able to pour everything we have into an enriching literacy and math foundation for, for younger grades, because by the time they get to third grade, the EOGs are next to impossible for a lot of kids. So, I don't know that this is the right place for that, though, but.
Well, one of the things that Maggie, you lifted up, I saw it, I kind of threw it away, because it's, this first paragraph is just like a salad of words, in my opinion. But, "The board recognizes the critical role of parents," poorly defined, "government and nonprofit agencies, businesses in the community, in helping individual students and the school system meet this goal." I wonder if, if there's space, if you have a vision for further articulating, because that's where a majority of the early childhood sits right now? We're, right, if you, if we look at what we offer compared to the total number of kids, the majority of children are going to access that through what was listed in that statement, and therefore there may be a place for us to name what, a little more about how we would be using this statement to improve what we do, if that belongs here. I mean, it's here, it's this one, one statement, doesn't mean that much to me here, but maybe there's something within that.
You're making me think about, you know, like if we have an aspirational statement in there, maybe other school districts embrace a similar aspirational statement, and then we've got the North Carolina School Board Association with a mix of representation from different political perspectives, advocating with the General Assembly for improved funding and infrastructure for early childhood education. So there's a lot of ways where we can have an impact, and it may be something that we then, like the, the school systems lobbyists get involved.
I appreciate both of those things. I especially appreciate like trying to find where something like this could fit in. I do want to be careful that we're not, we're not creating a document, I want to, I want to draw a distinction between aspirational and hopeful, like, like creating a, right, creating a document that's like, we hope that the General Assembly will abide by some kind of, I mean, legitimate, right? We've, we've sent plenty of voices to the General Assembly with not a lot of effect, so I do want to be careful about that.
All great comments. So I guess the last thing to touch on, were there any particular topics or things that you, that stood out to you from the exam, the, the other three policies that I provided from three different districts, that you think we should incorporate?
Maggie, before we get to that, Maggie, can I, can I mention one thing, some other things that I see are missing?
Oh, yeah.
To me, I mean, I, I see like foster respect and appreciation. What I don't see is self-respect. And it, to me, feels like a lot of these bullet points are, and I don't mean to get psychological on us, but to seem to be the bottom layers of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. It's like personal security, employment, resources, securing those. Where's the language that gets above that? To esteem, to respect, self-esteem, status recognition, or even self-actualization, those kinds of things. Right now, and I think this goes back to what you were saying about sufficient, and I would also look at the word "basic." I understand that our constitution says sound basic education, but to me, that word is just like, it's like flour in my mouth. And, and so, what's some language that really talks about how we're go, like, it's not even aspirational to me, it's necessary to me, to go beyond what's sufficient, to go beyond what's basic, to provide what's exceptional to the students, every single student who needs it and deserves it.
Maggie, can you hit Chicago public school system? That definition of, of what they are learning, I mean, the culturally responsive education diversity, I mean, with the scope of policy and the definition of everything that is listed, I mean, anti-racism, anti-bias, culturally responsive education, diversity, equity, I mean, restorative practice, workforce equity, I mean, all of it, it's, it's good, that Chicago has. I mean, where do we miss it? I mean, it has what we need in our school system, and I mean, instead of, I hope we're not pulling it out, but we should be adding to it, because it's, it's out there. And I think that's maybe one we should be looking at, you know?
I, I had the same thing noted, the, like, the, the whole, the section of definitions, and the, in particular, the policy commitments. I think, you know, having a what and how in our Policy 3000, particular, particularly with an eye toward culturally responsive education and diversity and social justice, and all of it, I think fits into the scope of our policy. Thank you.
I didn't put this one in there by accident.
I absolutely agree. Here's, the only thing I didn't like about the Chicago one is it's so long. So, I, well, to the extent that this document, I assume we're going through this exercise because it's so important that we share with administrators across the district, I'm only suggesting you could use all of these words in our policy, and then essentially say, see, attach Exhibit A for all the definitions. I, I would just love it if somehow we had a somewhat more straightforward actual policy, and then all the heft of this, like, I like it all, but I think some people are not going to necessarily read it all, and I want it to have maximum effect.
Jessica, you have anything somewhere?
Thank you.
To echo, or to kind of sit, standing next to that quietly, is I am really hesitant to start using, adding language that makes our school system a target in any way, any more than we already might be, because I want our students and staff and community to be as safe as possible in a challenging time.
I hear that, and also, like, city council has already received information to that point.
Yeah, to me, it's a yes and, because it's yes and, at what point, I want to be careful about how I say this, at what point do we, as a board, put ourselves up and say, this is how we're protecting our students? As opposed to diminishing language, lifting it up, and saying, right, and I, I understand there are consequences to that, and of which choice do we want to, do we want to take? So, it's not, neither choice is the easy one. But, yeah.
No, the last sentence in the first paragraph. "The board is committed to allow administrators at individual schools to develop and implement plans necessary to ensure the educational success of their students." I think you made a comment that you, you would rather have the district do it, instead of allowing administrators at individual schools to develop and implement.
Look, let me clarify. I said, I'm fine with them doing that individually, but it should be based off of the district plan. So there needed to be a clarification, that the district sets its priorities and goals, and then the schools build their plans based off of that standard, and individualize, innovate, whatever they need to meet those standards.
Would it be district, or would it be individual at that point?
The district sets their district work plan, and then the schools take that district work plan and build their school plans based off of that.
Okay.
That's, I'm just saying, that's my preference.
But if I asked a principal, would I be in trouble?
Go ahead and ask him.
I would be comfortable with language that was more similar to, you know, in parallel or in collaboration with the district work plan, as opposed to.
Individual.
A top-down hierarchy from the district work plan down, because I think there needs to be, they have to be in, in dialogue, if that makes any sense.
I appreciate you bringing this up, because I know that since you've been with us, the vision that I feel Dr. Furman has articulated is one where building leaders lead their buildings, and that's important. The principal of a school is one of the most impactful humans on a child's life, and they have to have autonomy and authority to run their building. And that's something that I've always appreciated about the way that you view this. And so, when I think about, this isn't quite the same, but I, I also really think it's important that we nurture what I think of as a district culture. And so, to your point, it's work plans and that kind of thing, but that there is the concert that we operate within the culture of Asheville City Schools, but every building leader has to lead their building, the good and the bad. They have to be able to make decisions that they can implement and be, be field of agency to do that. But, but we're all one, we're all moving in one direction together. I mean, that's why we have to have this policy. This isn't a school policy, this is a district policy.
All right, so next steps, I'll start taking this policy to get feedback and start putting some drafts together and ideating with our educator advisory council, the student advisory council, working on a survey to get out to families, and then as we draft policy language, obviously reviewing that with legal to make sure we are compliant, and then being, bringing back drafts to the board for review and presenting updates as we're ready for those, until the board feels like, yeah, we're feeling good enough about this to put it into first read, second read.
Thank you, Maggie.
You're welcome.
I think we're now ready to turn to the feasibility study.
I hope everyone had an opportunity to find the update of the implementation timeline, and just want to open it up to board members if you have any questions, if you would like for me to expand on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just remind the board, I'm a recovering high school math teacher, so I do love a good graph, and any opportunity to throw one at you, I will do.
April, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we voted on this last month, we had several points in our conversation, times where we noted that the board would have, we'd, there'd be more discussion about the scope of the work to be done, and I've. And I, just if you could explain where that happens in the timeline.
The first step is to work, we, we've really worked hard to get all the data requested to the firm to really be able to unpack that, and we have named a leadership team that is school personnel, county representation, just to have some robust conversation in other departments. That will, once that happens, on the 16th, actually, of September, we will start really unpacking the scope of work and detailing what, where we are and what they need, and then we will share it back with the board. I will provide regular updates. I have suggested that I provide them, I believe, in the next one in November, February, and then again in May. And we would, you know, of course, invite the board to add more input. I'm happy to give updates more frequently. I was just trying to be really realistic of everyone's time and energy because we are hoping to get this project completed within eight months. But I'm open to suggestions. I do feel confident about the team we have in place, and I'm, I feel like we can really get a lot of work done in a meaningful way.
I'm just going to speak this here because it seems like a good time to tell the rest of the board this. I think I'm up to three recently. I get emails from people asking about properties we have for sale. And my response has been, we are undertaking a feasibility study, and we will know more about options as we complete this study.
Yes.
I'm just sharing that with everybody that that is, people are asking.
I get those emails as well.
I think I have a follow-up to Sarah's question, then. Knowing that we did have a fairly lengthy conversation about, you know, what will be included in the scope of work beyond what we saw in the proposal, that I wouldn't want us to be bringing you suggestions or requests at a time that it's no longer appropriate. And so could...
Maybe I could expand a little bit more about some of the detailed work and the conversation that we are hoping to have. So the leadership team, which, again, as you described, principals, members of district office, we will, we will be monitoring the work of the school improvement teams as well. So this will be a topic every month. We're going to ask principals to, like, bring this up to your school improvement team, which has representation of their staff, their parents, in some places even students, to really have that ongoing dialogue so people know and can ask pointed questions. Because not only are we looking to see, like, what facilities we need to repurpose or maybe potentially sell, we really want to know what it's going to take to get our classrooms ready for the future and our campuses ready for the future, and that's driving the conversation and driving the work. So I'm hoping that as information is disseminated that way, it would be more fluid to the board so that where your questions are a little bit more technical and less of, like, an emotion or fear, just to be direct. Because there is a lot of feelings around lots of these campuses. I have mine, too, and I want to make sure that we're doing our good, our diligence in supporting this work in an appropriate way, which is why having a firm and someone else walking alongside of us helps us stay on task.
Is it possible to reply to those emails that we have no plans to sell any property? We have no plans to sell any property.
I think that's what she said. We, after the study, we will consider that. Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Historically, this board has not been interested in getting rid of property.
Right, I, I understand that. I think, though, that the purpose of the feasibility study is for us to consider the best use of our property. That's the information we're gathering. I am just telling everybody that thank you for your interest in our school system. We, we are not doing anything right now. I'm not conveying any message whatsoever.
I just don't want to see an LLC that was formed a year in advance to buy a bunch of property like, you know, the debacle with the Woods.
Okay.
Yeah.
So our current plan is to provide the board updates, as I suggested, if you feel comfortable with that. And then every time we meet as a larger leadership committee, I'm going to work with Dr. Maggie and Dr. Decat's office to send out some communication to staff and to all stakeholders, just giving them an update of what's happening and other opportunities for stakeholders to engage.
I appreciate that, and especially having a schedule of the regular updates so that if any board members are feeling like the information that's being looked at or how it's going to be viewed, we'll have opportunities to dialogue and learn along the way. I, I want to prevent coming to the end of a report that then board members say,
What happened?
This isn't what I thought we were going to get, therefore, I'm, you know, I, I just don't want us to find that sort of experience. So, yeah.
April, one of the things I saw on the 90-day facility needs assessment is a board workshop. Is that when the board would have that opportunity to provide additional things that we would want to see, could they fit in that eight-month scope? And if so, here's what that would, you know, additional work that that would entail? Or if it's not, like, that would be an addendum that potentially could be added later?
Absolutely. We, it can be scheduled per the board's request. I left that kind of open ended. I just wanted to provide, like, concrete. I will definitely tell you, I'll give you an update on these during work sessions. But we could have a dedicated workshop if the board decides they want that to happen.
So I'm wondering if maybe the October work session, we could do some, provide that opportunity for the board to present or share, here's some of the additional scopes that we'd be interested in. So if we could have the firm come to the October work session, I think that would be.
If the firm is unavailable, is our members from the leadership committee acceptable?
Yeah.
Any other questions or suggestions? Thank you.
Thank you, April. At this time, we are going to move into some information items, and next we will hear from Heidi about the budget update.
Good evening again. This is brief because that's all we have, is some brief information. But we did want to send something out to employees this week and wanted to share that with you first. What we have right now is still a mini bill that did not address raises, which typically a mini bill would. What it did say is it authorized a bump. Now, what authorized means is we can go ahead and do that, but they didn't provide any money for that. What they did provide money for was the increase in fringe benefit costs and a couple of minor allotment adjustments right now. We're hoping with the comments from the state superintendent last week and the action by the state board that we will get better allotments this coming week. What had happened in the past, always with a continuing resolution, was that we would receive allotments based on the formulas that had always existed, adjusted for our new ADM, and we'd move on, and if those needed to be adjusted up or down later, they would do that. But because of some of the more recent articles of some of the school districts that might have inadvertently overspent their allotments, the State Department is running a much more conservative approach to funding right now, and so they opted to allot us at the very lowest amount that any of the scenarios currently on the table would afford for us to receive. So that is very hard to use as a budgeting tool, and like I say, I think at this point, now that there's been fairly consistent opinion that there will not be a budget anytime soon, they're going to move forward with the more traditional way of giving us allotments. So we basically do need to move forward with giving our staff that are qualified to get a bump, a bump at this time, and we just wanted to make sure you understood what that meant. So the state only ever authorizes certified salary schedule adjustments, basically. Local salary schedules for hourly staff are always up to the discretion of districts to, to set, and we did revise those significantly last year. So everyone in those certified salary schedules would be bumped up a year if it applies to them that year. Some of those levels in those certified salary schedules, based on people's years of experience, do not go up. Same with the hourly pay tables. They're on, we have tiers set up with groups of years of experience, so some people would go up a year this year, some people will not. They'll stay in that same tier, and without a raise, they would not see an increase. So just to make that clear, that with this action that was taken, we received no funding for the bump. We can do the bump, we will do the bump this month on the regular September payroll, but some people will receive an increase and some people will not under this scenario that we're currently working under. And then what we will do, we'll make sure everyone gets the new pay rate on the September 19th, regular payroll date, and we will process any retroactive adjustment depending on everyone's terms of employment, whether they would do that in July or August or neither, that we will, any retro pay that is due, we will do on that cleanup check on the 26th. But I did just want to make sure everyone understands that this is not our choice, we were not funded, and not everyone will be able to see an increase in compensation at this time. Until that time, they decide to pass either another mini bill or the actual budget.
Go ahead.
Are you saying that because we have some teachers who are paid using local funds and some teachers who are paid using state funds, and we tend to want to have our most experienced teachers with higher salaries paid on the state funds, that they would receive a bump and the teacher in the classroom next door would not? Or would all teachers get the bump?
No, so all teachers are paid on the state salary schedules. Just some are paid out of local funds, some paid out of state funds, some paid out of federal funds. But there are some steps when you get higher up on the teacher's salary schedule that there is no more bump, like 25 and up. So some of our more experienced teachers may not see anything under this scenario. All of our hourly people are on our local pay schedules, so some of them will see one, some of them will not, and no administrators would receive one at this time. Principals, as we understand it right now, would still be able to get their adjustment in January. You know, they changed principal salary, I don't know what that was, eight or 10 years ago, where basically they're paid the first part of the year based on last year's information. They're paid January through June on current year information. So as far as we understand it right now, our principals will be able to get adjusted January 1st as scheduled based on their either ADM changes or their growth scores as those come in this fall.
September 19th, it's in two weeks, right?
Correct.
We won't be, I mean, we wouldn't see the raise that would be given between now and September 19th. In other words, we, the board doesn't have to approve the bump, correct?
Well, and I did actually ask guidance from DPI and, and our attorneys on that because I was a little concerned under continuing resolution. You know, normally that means no one gets a change. When I asked my, actually, I didn't ask you, I asked our accountant because I said, what does that mean under a continuing resolution? I lied, I'm sorry, Anna. So what really is happening is we're still paying on all of our traditional pay schedules. We are not changing any of that, and we are only increasing the year of experience if those people that qualify for that qualify for an increase.
And we will see that, we would see it after they receive it, correct?
We would see...
The board will see it in a closed session, a change of pay, a change of, so we wouldn't see the change of...
Actually, this, and that's part of the reason, I talked to Dr. Maggie about this earlier and asked if we couldn't delay this because what bump everyone will receive is an increase, let's just say you have five years' experience and you're going to six years.
Yes.
Based on the 24, 25 salary schedules, there are no new 25, 26 salary schedules at this time. Everything is still operating on last year's budget and last year's salary schedules. So if there is a raise finally passed, then everyone will get the raise plus a slight adjustment to the 25, 26 salary schedules.
And is that rate been approved?
Right. So the 24, 25 schedules is what we're working from, and those are all approved and all in the system and all ready to go.
So we're only talking about people getting recognized for their, for what year of service they're in?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to, I want to make sure that Jesse's question got answered, and I have a question of my own, but Heidi, the way I understand the bump, and I'm going to, it's not going to be precise, but you go so many years of experience and then you're entitled to a bump in pay, right? You go up a class, they have these words for it.
Almost everyone, yes.
Correct. But then the, it is somewhat, not random, but you, you go for a number of years and then there's a bump, and you go for a number of years. And there is this period, I've heard teachers talk about it, where there's this middle ground where you go years and you don't see any kind of bump. We're not changing any of that. That is all the same. What the law said that passed is that they will recognize the bump. So it's not all teachers. It's, I mean, Jesse, I don't know if you're asking for a list of the teachers that qualify. I mean, I guess it could be created, but it's just whoever is at that particular stage. They are going to get a bump because the legislature said so. And I think what I want to focus on is it is an unfunded bump, and so it is going to come out of our coffers to cover that, but the people who are entitled to a raise in pay, which is a somewhat random smattering of people based on where they are, will get that. Heidi, my question is, let's just say in November, there's a budget, and let's just say that the legislature is thinking to themselves, hey, we approved this bump back in whatever, August. Do we anticipate any kind of retroactive payment for this bump?
From the state?
Yeah.
This, the state will allot us our funds like they always do. Usually, these are built into that. And they usually apply it retroactively. The, the good news on this, if there is good news, is that a, a large number of our teachers and professional staff are in position allotments in the state allotment piece, teachers, instructional support, enhancement teachers, you know, CTE. And so all of those position allotments, we are guaranteed whatever those cost. So there are a significant number of our staff that indirectly we will be funding for just because of the way the formula works.
I think I was going to ask a similar question, and I'm going to ask it in case it's not the same question, but that we've been here before where we don't have a budget, and I think I was operating under the idea that typically what would happen is we would just pay everybody what we've been paying them because we don't have anything to, to go on, and at the point that the budget passes, we find out what are the raises, what are the, and it, and then everyone sees a correction where they get whatever the increase they're due based on raises and bumps, is what I would have thought, and then it gets paid back to the start of the fiscal year. So in one paycheck, they get caught up and then paid at that rate for the rest of the school year. And I think I'm hearing you say that we're going to do it sort of in two phases this time. One piece, so some, some people who are eligible will get a little, we'll have to, we'll have to cash flow cover that. But what I really want to make sure I understand is, at the point that the budget is passed, as much of it that is funded by the state, we will get it so that we can pay, we can refill our coffers.
Generally, that's how it's worked, yes. Right now, like I say, this language is never, to my knowledge, has never been passed this way before. You either got a raise, which came with the bumps and everything that
Right.
were within your schedules, or you got nothing. And this year, they decided to approve the bumps across, and they did that for other state agencies, too. So I guess they were trying in some way to give everyone something without passing a budget. I'm not sure what the thought process was, but, so yes, there would, this would actually, if there is eventually a budget, there will be a whole nother series of retro pay we'll have to do, which is driving, you know, me and my fellow finance people nuts, but...
As I said, logistically, this is quite challenging.
It is. But it's also, like I say, I asked Dr. Maggie if we couldn't hold off at least a month or so to see if they might actually pass it so we could do it all at one time. But now that there's no indication that one is coming, I've already heard from teachers that said, look, I was really counting on that $50 a month or that $75 a month, and we really hate to...
To make them wait, because that's what it would mean, is just making them wait. Okay.
And, but you do not need this board to vote on this. You are telling us that we're going to go ahead and honor what the legislature has said, hoping the cash flow works out.
Correct.
But I get you, we're in uncharted territory with the way they did this.
Correct. And I feel like you would get questions, so I wanted to be aware. And I feel like you would get questions, so I wanted to be aware.
Can I ask a, make a request, that whether or not the legislature eventually funds this bump, I'd be curious, for our own knowledge, and as we go and we talk to legislators, whoever else, I'd be curious to know what, what we'll be paying out of local funds to cover this for now. Again, expecting it one day to be reimbursed, I still think it's a good number to have, to then be able to go to our legislators and say, this is what the legislature's doing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. Okay, board members, policies on first read, reminding everybody that 3320 and 3620 are gonna be put off until October. Anna Gillespie is here with us tonight to walk us through.
Hey, y'all, I'm playing the role of Kim Dekent tonight, and I know I can't do it justice, but I'm gonna do my best. So before you are, this, the policies listed here, these are all from a special policy update that NCSBA issued earlier this summer, following the earlier update that led to the ones that are now on second read. This was based on recent changes in law in North Carolina, pretty much all of these were. I'm happy to go through them with, and explain the changes that were made, or just hear questions, whichever y'all prefer.
I have a question.
Sure. Yes.
And 4120, but not 1310.
So it's 3320 and 3620 are the ones that have been pulled. To explain this, what the law has required, and I'm glad you noted that, because it is the same language is included in 1310, that's included in 3320 and 3620. But we talked about like moving forward with 1310, because the law requires that the board adopt a policy on this issue. So putting it in the parent involvement states that minimum statutory requirement while waiting on 3320 and 3620 gives us the opportunity to refine what actual implementation will look like, while we're meeting that minimum, like necessarily required by statute. And so that's kind of the thought process between moving forward with that while holding on the other two.
Thank you, okay. Then for 3210-
Yes.
Called parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials. What I'm curious about is the additional text to hear from Dr. Furman or other district leaders, to what degree is this different from how we already do it and would represent a burden or a large increase in work? In particular, around the paragraph, any request by a student's parent that the student be prohibited from borrowing certain library books will automatically be granted, must be made in writing, and then there's something that says, the titles of all library books must be accessed through searchable web-based catalog displayed on the home. Do we do this, is any of this like, yeah, we already do this, this is just, or is this a big lift?
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a lift if we get parents, a slew of parents. I don't anticipate that we will, knock on wood, and it is parents only. So yeah, there is gonna have to be a way to figure and sort that out. But like, someone from the community can't say, we want this book removed from your libraries, when they don't have any students in the school system, or I want to come and inspect your stuff, other than what's online. So yeah, I mean, yes, there will be some administrative processes we'll have to put in place and some extra steps, for sure.
The idea is that parents can request that their student will not be allowed to borrow certain materials, and that's not something we already have to deal with, this is new. Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think there has been some policy in place before about parents being able to inspect what was available in the library.
Correct, yes.
But that allowed them to, you know, say like, my child can't check this out, but now that's a statutory requirement that they-
I'm sorry, it's on, it's just not close to my face.
At least it's on. Sorry, Lisa. But so it is a change that now it's statutorily required that they be able to access that whole list.
And the other addition in there is classroom libraries. So we have to find a system to get the names of every book in every classroom and publish that, like, that's gonna be a massive lift.
I had, go ahead. I had a constituent call me this week about specifically the classroom issue, and was asking how we were planning on addressing that. So we, we just had a casual conversation of ideas, and it occurs to me, having used barcode scanning equipment before, that it might be an opportunity for parental or PTO involvement to help scan with a barcode reader, books in classrooms, to take some of the burden off of teachers, and that it might be something that we could use, because you can scan the ISBNs instead of somebody manually having to type in all the titles. Just a, you know, an idea, an opportunity for us to get parents to help us solve these issues.
I wanted to ask if, as someone who utilizes the Bunca County Library Service of collecting books for teachers based on themes, do those, those also apply to what's considered a classroom library? They do not? Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
And also, it's similar, like if a bookmobile kind of drove up and was like, hey, come get, you know, no, that wouldn't be considered classroom library. But it is considered supplemental materials, which the teachers do have to share, what they use for supplemental materials as well. Thank you.
Does this apply to traditional public schools only?
Um, that's a great question. I, I mean, that's what I've been looking at mostly, is the implementation on public So the requirement to adopt a policy requiring this is only for local boards of education, so all public schools?
Do charter schools have to comply with this?
I would think so, but I don't advise any charter schools.
Okay, sorry.
I haven't looked into it too deeply.
Okay, can you look at policy 7820F? If a person come to me and say, I want something on blasey blasey, I tell them, you gotta go to see the superintendent. Is that my correct response, or?
So generally, yes. This information, this is being updated as this information is now legally required to be posted online. So that's where this change is coming from. But generally, yes, if somebody's looking for specific information, I would route them to an administrator.
Tell them, come and see the superintendent. All right, because we, I don't want the information, but if, if they ask about it, I just say, go ask the superintendent, right? And they can get, you can get that information.
About their own personnel file?
No, it's about, no, if, this right here is about a public information. If someone off the street would come in, I mean, if somebody wants to come in and wants to look at somebody's public information, they'll come to you.
Well, anything public, well, you don't already post on, they'd have to either put in an open records request for information, or if it's publicly available, we would just point them to the publicly available link.
Okay.
And the law that was passed was particularly to central office salaries, titles, all that stuff, and we've already posted that to be in compliance by August 15th.
But everything with public except the names, the names is still public information, correct?
Correct. They, someone could ask us to provide them, put in an open records request with that list in addition to the names, correct?
Do we have that on files, I mean, do we have it in the system? Is it out there for someone? Or we just have the information without the names on it?
I would have to ask Mark and Heidi how they pulled that data.
If someone wants, the data that we just sent out last month, oh, Mark just left out, okay, it's on you.
I'll get in for that later. We pulled that list in kind of a massive way, because of the way the data's in the system, and we trimmed it down to be what needed to be posted. So we certainly can add that back as an information request would be submitted.
But what was sent was information without, what I'm trying to say here, is it required that the names of each person that works, that, you know, that job title, does the name has to be out there for the public to read?
That wasn't a requirement in the law.
Okay.
The name has to be associated with the position, the position title had to be listed.
There's a position title and the amount that that person's making.
And then the HR department is working on posting more detailed job descriptions to go with this page, in case anyone had further questions.
Okay.
Sorry, Pippi, I'm sorry. Jessie, did your question get answered? I'm still processing the question and wasn't sure if, okay. Pippi.
I'm looking at this item G, current, and then the additional words are total compensation from all funding sources, including at least salary. But if somebody has a side job, they're waiting tables, we don't include that information. If somebody is doing additional work for an organization at our schools, like, for example, a teacher or classified employee who's also working for an after-school program, like at Bright Ideas, we wouldn't include that information, correct?
That's correct.
Does it make sense to qualify the all funding sources in that sentence, or, so that it is specific to the school district, all funding school-
So that language-
Sources from the school district?
So that language was pulled directly from the statutory change, and so the statutory change just says all funding sources, and so this policy just followed that. I mean, because I think that, you know, like, the intent of the statute was only to address employment in the school system or by the school system, and so I think that's why it kind of looked at the, like, I think they assumed all funding sources was only those from the school. That was how I read it.
Well, I suggest clarifying it, but I understand exactly why you would pull it exactly from the statute.
I have a question about policy 3510, religious-based exemptions from school programs. Same nature as my last question, which is the additions here, in particular, if a student is excused from a classroom discussion activity or assigned reading, the student will be provided an alternative activity or assignment aligned with the standard course of study. Is this something that is already happening, or will this have, is this something that's gonna be a big? Okay.
Yeah, another one where we're gonna have to write procedures and steps for people to be supposed to follow, yes.
But Maggie, I realize the statute, the, excuse me, the policy is now bigger than it used to be, but do we get these requests very often? I have a question, Anna.
Yes.
716340, talking about the criminal background check, and they make it very clear that we have to do them and we have to pay for them. And the transportation service vehicle contract 6340 says we have to do them, it doesn't say you have to pay for them, but I think we do. Anyway, any sense of, and I don't know if this is a Heidi question, are we talking thousands of dollars, or what is the cost of this? I don't even know, what does it cost these days to do a background check?
Four dollars.
Oh. Okay. So, I mean, still money, but not. And were we, weren't we doing some of these before? Like, what's different then? I mean, there's some more cost to us, but not huge. But is this a lot more work than we used to do?
Can you repeat the question, I'm sorry?
We were already doing background checks.
Yes.
Is the main difference now that we pay for it? Is that-
We've been paying for background checks.
So is there anything different then in this?
It's not statutorily required that we pay for it, but I will say, there, there is a little bit of difference with the contractors in particular.
There, in some cases, universities or third-party entities may volunteer to pay for background checks.
And so we would accept it from those parties that would agree to, but now we can't do that. So it's just a slight difference on contract, but we've always had some sort of background check happening for contractors.
My, my view has always been, I would like to see the background checks for myself, so.
And that's, I had a question about this new language, specifically about contractors. It reads to me like it didn't used to be here, as if you didn't have to have any kind of background checks on contractors, and now you do. To, and to what degree were we already requiring background checks, and for all contractors, does this, do we have certain types of contractors? I mean, I'm thinking about student-facing contractors versus-
Anyone, anyone outside of the school system coming in and they're around students, staff on a regular basis, background checks. That has always been my motto.
This has been a standard term in practice in contracts for, I think, at least as long as I've been doing this, which isn't that long, but long enough for a few years, so.
It's, I mean, it's good risk management, if we want, I hate to like frame it in that way, because it's good risk management, and now that we've got it, some things in policy in this way, is there any possibility of like reduction in insurance costs, because we're proving that we're doing discounted risk management?
Actually, like Anna said, it's been a standard contract term since as long as I can remember, and our risk managers that will do presentations will tell you, obviously, not only is it a best practice, but it's crazy if you don't. But what they do require, which is part of that, April can attest to this, the thorn in our side trying to get some of these independent contracts signed by companies that will perform services on our campuses is because they don't want to jump through all those hoops in those contracts, and part of that is that. I mean, that, that's, that's something that takes them time and money and things to do, but important for it to be there. And now, actually, our insurance carriers, if we do not secure those certificates of insurance to prove that we've gone through all these processes and they have background checks and insurance, then they can come back on our insurance policy if there ends up being a problem. So we're actually, upon request, required to provide that documentation to the insurance companies, and if we don't have it, then there could be a problem.
Okay, last one. Could you turn to 5070 and 7350? Policies start with number seven through 10.
Okay, wait.
Is that in the process of being rewritten? It's 5070 and also 7350, they are together, right?
Yeah, so they, it's a cross-reference?
Yes, cross-reference.
Yeah.
Number seven through 10.
Number seven through 10. I think those are just the changes from the School Boards Association that have been recommended, is what you see in there. And I think the only addition is the including travel-related reimburse, reimbursements, that was like a locally added change, just to clarify that, but everything else in there. I don't think there's any more changes that are forthcoming there, I think those are I think those are just the changes that NCSBA has recommended. And we've said those are consistent with the applicable law.
So if any salary changes, we can't see them for the next closed session policy board, right? According to this right here.
So any changes in compensation would be public information? So they could be viewed by anybody?
No, but I'm talking about, I mean.
Before they're approved?
No, not before they're approved. Let's say that the, what you about ready to do with that order that we just read, Heidi, if teachers get paid that bump, do we get to see the increase of each and every, do we get to see the increase on the next board session? Change of pay?
We typically don't provide that for boards when it's across the board, something we're doing just based on moving up a step or overall raise that was given by the state. So we don't typically do that. If that's something that the board would like to see, that's definitely something we can pull.
Because the money coming, since we don't have a budget, the money coming from somewhere. And then about three to four months, if all of this goes in the budget, we don't have a budget. Is it going to come back to the board for overspending? Or is it going to come to the state or to the federal level?
Well, we will be bringing you a budget, most likely in October, one way or the other. We've got a local current expense appropriation. We will have state allotments. We have federal planning allotments. And what the net effect would be is how much, and how good a job we did at making budget cuts this year, how much that will leave fund balance to make up the difference is what, what we'll be bringing you as part of that presentation.
I think, Jessie, I want to make sure, you said something that makes me, as a board member, want to be responsible for. Could it happen that we are spending money? We have it, but we're following the law with doing these pay increases. You've told us that. We're not, we're not doing that where they said you can't. We're doing what they said. Is there, what kind of risks are we taking when we spend money ahead of an approved budget? Are we taking any risks? We know of school districts in North Carolina that have spent money in ways that then it turned out to be really, really difficult. So from the standpoint of our due diligence, are we taking any risks?
Well, like I say, on the good news side of this, a significant number of our positions are in those state position allotments. And that money is already guaranteed to us.
Okay.
I'm just talking about the ones that are in dollar allotments, the federal appropriation, and the local current expense appropriation. And that's why I say that difference will come out in how much or how little of fund balance we need to balance the rest of the budget. I don't anticipate this cost to be more than out-of-pocket cost, more than about $50,000. I can't run that exactly right now. But, I mean, we're talking about, because those state position allotments absorb a big piece of this expense, and the whole remainder, because not everyone gets bumped, will be in and around the neighborhood of $50,000. So we're not talking about a, my friends down the street kind of situation. So.
And that's why I've been very proactive with our staffing formula. So the last two years, we have continuously tried to align our staffing positions with student enrollment for a reason. Because had we not done that, that problem would keep building and building and building. And we're in a very, but I believe, a very safe position. But we are going to have to continue to look at our staffing formulas, to look at our student enrollment, and match those where we see the need. And hopefully, looking at our feasibility study results and determining, are there different ways that we can organize our district to even further maximize our operational efficiencies when it comes to how we organize students and grades and locations?
I have one final policy question, Anna. I think it's the only one we haven't talked about, this use of wireless communication devices.
I'm so glad you said that because that was exactly what I wanted to talk about. So one thing that Kim has noted, and it is that this policy is time-sensitive because it's supposed to go into effect already, under law. And so we would request that this be first and second read for this one, so that it would go ahead and get approved at the meeting next week, along with the other policies. So, yeah, this is huge. This was one of the changes in law that was its own separate thing, requiring that cell phones be turned off during instructional time. So that's what's happening here. But, so districts do have to send a copy of the policy by September 1st, and every time the policy is changed. So it is a little time-sensitive.
So it, a very brief answer is all I'm looking for.
Sure.
Have, I mean, I know this was big. And has the different schools, they pivoted and were doing it? What does it look like on the ground?
So, great news, because we'd already moved to cellphone-free high school last year. They're just carrying on like they've been carrying on. I've been in the classrooms almost every day over the past two weeks at some point or another. And they all have the policy. Kids come in, they put their phones in the lockers, that's where they are for the class period, and they pick them up when they leave. So I haven't seen any real issues with the cell phones at the high school or the middle school. It seems to just be carrying on like normal.
How many have watches they use? Is that part of it?
That is included. And they have shared some communication with, they've shared communication with their parents, with the students. So far, we haven't had any issues of students using, that I'm aware of, students using their watches or something when they weren't supposed to.
What about fake cell phones?
I haven't had any, I mean, you can ask the principals, but I haven't heard of any students putting in a fake cellphone so they can keep their one in their bag. So I've heard that is a thing.
Because all of those kids are watching.
They're all watching this work session.
I will share, she would probably not appreciate this, but my Asheville High student shared that at the freshman social this past Friday, they kept the cell phones in the boxes for the social and found that there was a lot more IRL-type interactions, which I thought was pretty great.
So Anna, I have a process question because I've never done this before. Do we have to vote tonight? Or are we, you looking for consensus that we move it to, just straight to second read, to be approved next Monday on the consent agenda? I'm just going to put it all out there, and y'all tell me what you're thinking. Is that, is that right, Anna?
That's what I was looking for, is the second one, not a vote tonight, just have it on the consent agenda next week.
I am seeing consensus that we are, what's the word? Not escalating, but we are accelerating this to second read. It will be with the other second read policies on the consent agenda next Monday. Okay.
Can I ask a question about the language in it, real quick? Not to make any changes. But I remember we spent a lot of time on this a couple months ago. Is this, does this reflect in the language we discussed as a board? Or is it just NCSBA?
Yes, it should be reflective of, yeah, we've paid special attention to keeping that language.
I have one comment to share on an information-only procedure. If that's, are we at that?
Sure.
We're about to be done?
I think we're good. Thank you, if you don't mind. I think we're good with all the other policies on first read that were before us tonight. Okay. Yes, Rebecca, thanks.
On Procedure Code 7100P around recruitment and selection of personnel, I noticed lots, lots being stricken. And I'll be honest, lots of things that look like inside baseball to me. So I just wanted to uplift that having a hiring process that's rooted in principles of, you know, equity, you know, around candidate fairness and eliminating bias is a value that I hope we're upholding. If there's, if there are certain elements that were difficult and we're glad to put in the rearview mirror, that's great. But as it's looking really streamlined, just wanting to make sure that we're not watering down our ability to get a wide variety of candidates, to make sure that we're always looking for the largest pool of candidates, and doing the type of interview process that ensures that every candidate is getting the same treatment in our hiring process. Thanks for listening.
Okay. I have very short, random comments I wanted to share. And then we will take a break before we go into closed session. Board members, our half-day retreat is next Thursday, the 18th. I wanted to share with you the agenda, which is in draft form presently. And if you all have input about this, please email me after the meeting. But we're going to spend the first part of the morning doing what Maggie's calling vision work. And we're going to be looking at vision, mission, core value alignment with our foundational documents.
And we're, we'll really focus on vision.
Sorry.
Just really hone in on vision for that retreat. And then we'll knock out mission at another one and core values at a subsequent. It is, yeah.
We have a facilitator joining us, one who's experienced in our district. And so that will be part of the work of the board at our retreat, which is appropriate for us to spend some time on our vision. We will also hear from the various department heads with the key performance indicators that they all have. And they're going to share that with us. We are going to spend time reviewing 24, 25 school year student data. This will include student achievement data, student attendance data, staff attendance data, and student discipline data. So that will also be on the agenda. And then the last part, excuse me, of our meeting will be in closed session, and it will be our superintendent evaluation. So that is presently the agenda for our half-day retreat. And, you know, email me with comments and suggestions, Jessie.
It's going to be here?
No, it's at AB Tech.
Oh, yes. Okay, I remember.
So I just want everybody to know about that. And let me just, little asterisks, please do email me input that you have about the agenda and things you like or don't like. I just, we have time constraints. It really is going to be a half-day retreat. So we have, those are our parameters. Second, I shared with you all, we have set up, starting in July, quarterly meetings with the county manager, the chair of the county commissioners, and the vice chair. And then superintendent, chair, vice chair of Asheville City, superintendent, chair, vice chair of Buncombe County. And the idea was to meet more regularly, to talk about things. And when we met in July, our next meeting would have been in October, the next quarterly meeting. But there is a desire on the part of the county to talk more about funding strategies. They have, I'm going to, I'm going to use the word policy. I'm not sure that's actually the right word. But they've long had this policy that X percent of county revenue is allocated towards schools. It's a math formula. And we're going to try to revisit that and talk. I don't know what's going to come out of it. But we're having a special meeting in September to talk about that, to have, hopefully build new budget strategies. Third and last thing, I just wanted to remind folks about what I'm going to call continuing ed. And I actually printed this out. You all know, from your prior trainings, that all members of local boards of education must have 12 o'clock hours of training every two years. That includes ethics education. You know, these are our parameters. Kimberly Jones is going to share with us over the next few weeks, kind of where each of us is. She keeps track of that. But just sort of highlighting how important it is that we all do continuing education. George has already told us, he's attending the School of Government's Public School Funding Process webinar later this week, tomorrow. I signed up for the North Carolina School Board Association Law Conference, which is here in Asheville in October. And George, Maggie, Pepe, and Rebecca have signed up already for the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference in November. There's more information coming about that conference and an agenda, and I'll make sure to circulate it. But Kimberly Jones does need to know by the end of this month if others want to go to that conference. So I just, just a reminder to all board members about. So that's it for me. At this point, I would take a motion to, after a short break, to move into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Melissa is rushing to get up.